Maybe you noticed those power cranes all over campus before you left.
Thanks for pointing that out.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. Today is Monday, September 22nd, and this is the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education Annual Meeting. Can someone please read the approval of the agenda as a motion? Keith?
I move that the agenda Monday, September 22nd, 2014 Board of Education Annual Meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Second, please.
Second.
This is a roll call action.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Humble?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing for sale of district property at 3200 Pioneer Avenue Southeast Cedar Rapids. Laurel, have you received anything in written or email communication?
I have received no communication on it.
Okay, thanks. This now opens to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board should come to the podium now. Seeing none, that closes out the public hearing. Next, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on September 8th, 2014.
So move.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same thing.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Laurel Day for the election of president for the upcoming school year.
Thank you. Part of our annual meeting is to elect a presiding officer for the Board of Directors. At this time, I will call for nominations, and please remember that nominations do not require a second.
I would like to nominate Mary Meisterling.
Any other nominations? If not, at this time, I will declare the nominations closed. And per our board procedure, 202.1A, at this time, if we have no more than one nomination, we will select a presiding officer via roll call.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Humble?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
President Meisterling, if you'd like to step forward for your oath of office.
Raise your hand. Do you, Mary Meisterling, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of office of President of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? Please respond by saying, "I will."
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Laurel.
Thank you all. I very much appreciate the opportunity. It's a privilege for me to serve on this board and certainly in the capacity as president, so thank you. Next, I'm going to go ahead and look for an election for the vice president and entertain any nominations at this time.
I'd like to nominate Alan Witt.
Okay. Seeing no other nominations, we will go ahead and close, and I will do the same thing as Laurel did, and call for a roll call action to elect Alan Witt as vice president.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Humble?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Witt, if you'd like to step forward for the oath of office? Raise your right hand, please. Do you, Alan Witt, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? If so, please respond by saying, "I will."
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Alan. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Dave to talk about sale of district property at 3200 Pioneer Avenue Southeast Cedar Rapids.
Thank you. As a board, you know that we have been under contract to sell this property. This is a continuation of that contract. However, it has some substantive changes, and therefore, it was necessary to hold the public hearing and to bring it back. Our real estate consultant for the district, Scott Olson, is in the audience, and if there's questions that I can't address, we would call Scott to the podium. Essentially, the buyer has requested a right to apply for a 10-year tax abatement to serve as a city match for state tax credit funding. This was not part of the original contract, but is a requirement under the programs that the buyer is approaching, that the city have some match, and this is a way to meet that requirement. The closing date would change to December 31st of 2015 or sooner. It would anticipate we will close in that mid-2015 range. This is not a change, but I want to point it out to the community. Since we've entered into this contract, the buyer has paid a monthly fee for site maintenance and anything that has to do with that. That arrangement will continue till closing, so that entering into this contract does not obligate the school district to pay utilities and site costs pending the financial -- final financial arrangements of the buyer. And finally, the project is now to be constructed in two phases. The first, using historic tax credit and home loan funds, which will be the renovation of the school into 19 units. And the second phase will be freestanding housing utilizing LIHTC funding, and that's an acronym from the real estate world, not from the educational world, so I don't have an idea what that is. But I think the operative point is that the project is now a phased project, with phase one being the rehabbing of the old school and then the freestanding housing later. So with that, the administration recommends approval of the new contract.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I would like to abstain on this issue because our firm, the firm I'm part of, Hall &amp; Hall Engineers, we were involved in this project, so I'd like to abstain on this.
Okay.
I so move.
Second, please.
Second.
Discussion?
I have the 19 units. That will be the part of Monroe they're going to rehab that. Is that what you said? The renovation, the 19 units?
Yes, that's my understanding.
And then the freestanding housing. How many houses? Or are these apartments, or are they houses?
These are large apartments. They're designed for workforce housing. They're three to four-bedroom units, both in the -- the units in the school, which is approximately 19 units, are slightly smaller now than they were under the original proposal because of this very unique funding source, which would be to utilize historic tax credits on the school building, which are much easier to get than the low-income housing tax credit, which is what's your LIHTC. And what's occurring there is the state legislature modified how they qualify entrance into this program, and what it makes a difference to is they changed the rent structure last year. And it was supposed to be corrected in the last legislative session in this year, in 2014. It did not get done. And so, they hoped to correct it in the early 2015 legislative session, which would fund the second phase, which is the freestanding housing. There's 24 of those units, a combination of duplex and single-family units, again, three to four bedrooms. They're very similar in style to all of the housing being built for the Roots program, you know, out in the neighborhoods, Time Check and Check Village and others. Very nice housing in the Oak Hill Jackson. It's gone very well. The units are sold as fast as they're built, and so it'll be a very similar unit to those type of units. But under this program, they will remain as rental units for many, many years. That's what the credits are. And so, and they would be then maintained and monitored by Affordable Housing Network, which takes responsibility for selecting the tenants and meeting all the guidelines under the different programs. And so, a very good question, and that's what the change was. They thought the legislature was going to approve it. The main thing that's occurring here is, as you can see by the request, which is both the maintenance agreement and this contract have been signed by Affordable Housing Network. They are spending substantial funds to make this happen. They do not want to give up. They think this is a great project for the city, for this school building. They have hired consultants that have gone to the state to recommend that Monroe be certified as the first school of this type and design to be declared historic in the State of Iowa. And that required the units to be modified before the units went front to back. From the front of the building to the back of the building, the corridor was taken out. Now, the units go horizontal because, under the historic requirements, some of the bathrooms, the tile work has to remain to qualify as a historic building. So they modified the units. They also changed architectural firms and are using a firm, I think it's out of Des Moines, that specializes in working with the State of Iowa to maintain and make sure the design of these units meets the historic requirements to maintain the design of the school. That, of course, impacts like window design, door design, any kind of changes they want to make. And so, it's going to be kind of inch. The building's going to be brought back to its original character in the main corridor areas and the exterior of the building, but have a different use, which is housing. And I think the gym is still going to remain a gym space that can be used by the public and the people in that area, because that will not be converted to housing. Otherwise, the price remains the same. The price has not changed. It's $250,000 that the school district would receive upon closing. You've been receiving the $2250 for over a year. That will continue, so you're actually sustaining that. You know, you are receiving more than just the purchase price, because this has gone much longer than Auni had hoped and you had hoped. But this is that last sort of project that they made a commitment. Their board has voted to proceed and to continue spending money and to go after these credits and to build in two phases instead of one phase. And so, they would like to have your board approval to continue working and to make this happen and make it a reality. Everything else is in place. All the zoning, site plan approvals, city approvals, they're ready to get going. They just need historic credits and the home funds, which are much easier to obtain than the LIHTC funds, which would be used then for the new freestanding housing. So I, you know, my recommendation is what Dr. Benson said, that we continue to give them an opportunity, because right now, I don't see any other buyers out there, and they all face the same issue. The cost to convert this building have proven to be a lot more expensive than people anticipated, and so that's why it requires all these special programs, including the city match, which is new. And as you well know, I have two conflicts of interest on this issue. I have the privilege of serving on the Cedar Rapids City Council, representing District Four, which is this section of the community, and continue to serve on the Four Oaks Board of Directors. And Auni, who is the purchaser of this building, is an affiliated entity. But I, again, we, you know, I've not been involved in any of those votes. I don't serve on those boards. And so, you know, hopefully, that's a conflict that you feel comfortable with, as we've continued to work to dispose of the flood damage buildings and the Lincoln, which is now done, and hopefully, this will be that last building that will put a good use to a school building in a neighborhood on the southeast side.
Hey, thank you. Other comments, discussions? Keith?
When would the 10-year tax abatement start? Would it be in phases two or just?
Yes, it would be in phases. They would have to go and apply before the city council with the final design and their phasing as to how much they're spending. What they do is they put together a development agreement. It's almost like a contract with the city to meet certain goals, expend certain funds, design the units in a certain way, meet all the city requirements, zoning and building requirements, and then meet a goal of, you know, converting to the 19 units in that first phase. Then they would go back and ask for additional abatement, I believe, on the second phase, because that's going to be, they don't know when that may appear as far as funding.
Okay, Nancy?
Good question.
How will they handle with the increase of folks living in the area, the traffic? I know that was a concern at one time.
Yeah, and they've done a pretty good job of working with the neighbors, you know, because now we're down to 19 units. This is, some of these people don't even have vehicles. They do ride the public transit. That's why this is a good site, you know, in the, it's close to public transit, it's within walking distance. And so, I think that, you know, both the planning commission endorsed this project after hearing those concerns unanimously. The city council unanimously approved the project rezoning. And so, they've worked very hard to, you know, make this a very positive project for the neighborhood. And especially now that it's going in phases, that will allow this to phase in and not be as much of an initial impact, since it's going to be built in two parts.
I will say, I did attend the planning commission meeting where this was approved, and citizens did express their concern about traffic. There was a traffic study, and the way it was presented to that commission was that this area could handle that with ease, so. Gary?
Are local contractors used in this building project? And, well, answer that and then I follow.
Okay. What they will be doing is, once they know they received the funding, they'll finalize the architectural drawings, and then they will put this project out for bids. And in the past, all of the work that's been done in this Cedar Rapids area has been by local contractors.
Okay. I, follow-up was, I wondered if, in your requirements for the 10-year abatement, that there are any requirements to use local contractors in, as part of that agreement?
What happens with abatements? The city council encourages people that have development agreements to do that. There are certain restrictions that we cannot make it mandatory because of the type of abatement, but they do encourage it. And again, since this is a Four Oaks project, not a city project, they control who bids. And I have firsthand knowledge that all facilities that Four Oaks has built in the last 40 years have all utilized local contractors. And there's been many of these contractors that have been also major donors of Four Oaks over the years. And so, I'm very confident that they will keep the list of bidders to those local contractors, because contractors support Four Oaks and its other programs throughout the year. So, it's a good question.
Thank you.
Keith?
I'd like to see that December 31, 2015 day get moved up as much as possible. It really bothers me when you start pushing a project out that far.
And let me answer that question. It's a very good question. I asked the same thing when they came back with that date. And their goal is, they are going to hear on the credits and the home funds in March to April. Their goal, then, is to start construction in July or August. The only reason they ask for the extra dates is that we, Four Oaks has had a series of recent projects that have used these credits. One of those is an apartment house on Beaver and Third Avenue, across from Westminster Church. That has, using the tax credits to renovate that building into a very nice apartment complex. It's now been six months since the credits were given, that the state has still not released the final tax credits, because they had a change in staffing and they just stopped all projects. And they're stopped, sitting on a desk. And so, they have now hired those people. So, what, because of that experience of that apartment complex on Third Avenue and Beaver, they added six months to the closing date, because they didn't want to have to come back and do a new public hearing and ask for a new closing date. So their goal is exactly what yours is, is to close this as soon as possible and start the construction, because they want to be able to build through the winter. That'll get them better bids.
Just so you know, I drive by this property to and from work every day, and I have been known to call Laurel to report things that I wasn't happy with, or the snow wasn't shoveled, or the grass wasn't mowed. And for the most part, they've been spot-on in taking care and maintaining that property. And the other thing I would say is, one summer, I, last summer, I drove by, and there were a ton of police cars there, and I was very concerned. And it turned out that the police department was using that facility for some training exercise. But I'm out in the parking lot calling Laurel going, "I don't know what's going on out there, but it doesn't look good."
I know. And this will be a great community resource. I'm really kind of excited about keeping the gym and opening it up to the neighborhood. And as a part of the tax credits, it's kind of interesting, they had to modify their drive around behind the building by 20 feet, because they're required to keep the same-size original playground that was designed with the school. And so, they've got to place the playground equipment there, they've got to keep it the same size, so they had to slide the road 20 feet further to the north, and the city's approved that minor modification, you know, so they don't have to go back through the site plan process again. But I mean, it's going to be interesting to see that building restored to its original design, basically, even though it's got a different use 50 years later. So it's pretty exciting.
Any other discussion? This is a roll call action.
Director Witt?
Oops. Abstained.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Humble?
No.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye. Thank you. Next, I'll turn this over to Sherri Luiski to talk about the fiscal year 2014 financial highlights.
Good evening, Dr. Benson, members of the board. I'd like to go over the highlights from our fiscal year 2014, which is mandated by the Iowa code that we go over these highlights. The figures come from the CIR that's uploaded to the state, which is the Certified Annual Report that was uploaded on September 12th. This is an unaudited report, and it is subject to change. The first slide shows the total revenues brought in by all funds, the $253.7 million. The largest amount, of course, comes from our biggest fund, the general fund, $189.7 million. The second largest, the silo fund, $15 million. And then you'll see the other funds, the debt service management, food service, and so on. All funds have specific purposes, and all expenditures have to abide by the Code of Iowa. Our next slide shows the total expenditures, $260.9 million. Again, the largest fund, the general fund, $189 million. Revenues outpaced expenses in the general fund. The next fund, the largest, the silo fund, the $29 million. Actually, the expenditures were more in the silo fund, but that's because of all the infrastructure that's going on. And you'll see Jefferson High School, Washington High School, and everything that's going on there. So that's the reason for the larger expenditures. And then the other funds, follow suit. On our next slide, total general fund revenue shows where the revenues come from. The largest amount of revenues come from the state sources, which would be our state aid, state foundation aid. The next largest source is a local source, and that'd be our property taxes. A little bit from federal, a little bit from other financing sources, which are transfers throughout the district, throughout the other funds. Now, we'll go through the funds, the actual expenditures in the general fund. By far, the largest expense, salary and benefits. If you add together the salary and benefits, it's 81.5%. This stands true throughout the state and follows other school districts. The other expenditures are split up by objects, and you can see how they fall. I think I skipped one. Cash reserve levies. You can see how this has come up in the last couple of years. Actually, in 2014, 2015 is also predicted there. This is a result when you had passed an increase in the cash reserve levy in FY14. And you can see that this brought up the cash position for the district and put us in a much better position. Fund balance and unspent balance. My colors look a little different, I guess. The gold bar, the unspent balance, and the green bar shows the fund balance. You see the fund balance, which dipped down in FY13, and is now coming up in FY14. Again, that's a result of that cash reserve levy. The unspent balance, which has declined quite a bit, that will turn around, and that'll be a result of all of the budget adjustments and the adjustments that have been made in the last couple of years. The next slide shows the solvency, which is pretty much the health of the district. And this is the unassigned fund balance. This has increased from last year and will continue to increase, again, because of the additional funds from the cash reserve levy. Activity fund shows the balances and the trends. There's a good, strong reserve. Daycare fund, this is a combination of our Rockwell daycare and five seasons. Again, a good reserve. Debt service fund is where it should be. There needs to be a reserve there. We're required to hold a reserve for payment of future bond, principal, and interest. This one makes me smile. Flood recovery is now closed from the 2008 flood. Management fund is strong now. There was a dip in FY1112 when there were some unexpected retirements. We've now bumped up the reserves and are doing well in the management fund. Pepper fund is good and strong, and it needs to be because of the projects that are coming up. The Pepper vote, which was passed earlier this month, those revenues will start flowing in in FY16. Food nutrition fund is strong, good reserves. Capital projects, that's the silo fund. Again, you can see the decline, and that's because of all the projects going on. And the fund infrastructure improvements. You'll see in 2012, we hit $121.2 million. In the next couple of years, those amounts came down. That's payment on bond. Principal and interest, 2015 will bump up again because we had that $9 million bond issuance. A good comparison on the funding here is $122 million compared to $438 million is our debt obligation ceiling. So we're doing well there. Questions?
I had a question about one of your first slides, the revenue slide. It has a category of debt service, so I'm just not quite sure what debt service revenue means.
When we pay our bond, principal, and interest, we're required to pay it out of the debt service fund, required by the state. So even though it's silo funds, silo funds are transferred to debt service, debt service pays out the amounts.
So it's revenue from silo to debt service?
Yes.
So that's why it's revenue?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a transfer.
All right.
Other questions or comments? Yes.
I have another question. On the slide that says services for one of the expense categories? The gen, let me find it. Salaries, benefits, services, supplies. I was, it's about slide five, I think. I was just wondering what the services means.
Services are usually purchase services when we go outside of the district, when we go to the Abbey Center, when we go to different facilities, organizations.
Okay. Thank you.
I can get you a better listing if you would like.
It would include, it would probably include like contractors for facilities as well, if it's being paid out of the general fund, as compared to the Pepper.
Yes.
Okay.
It's all of our 300 object codes, which are purchase services.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
On your slide, it was towards the beginning, the general fund reserve trends, fund balance and unspent balance.
Uh huh.
If we look at that slide, it looks like from 12,000, or from 2012 to the present, we've cut the, the unspent balance has been halved each year. In '13, it was reduced by about half. In '14, it was again reduced by half. Do you have any reason why that funding has shrunk, and whether or not we have anything in place that would hold that off?
Yes. The funding's come down because of the expenditures throughout the district. What's been in place the last couple of years are the budget cuts, and basically, that's it. The reduction of FTE. And you'll see this work in and come up, start coming up in FY15. And you'll see this work in and come up, start coming up in FY15. It takes, when you hit, when you get off balance with funding in your budget, it takes a little bit for it to kick in and come back up. The first, of course, was with the fund balance, which is our cash reserves, and passing that levy, which helped the fund balance, which is, you know, good and strong now. And soon, we should see the increase of the unspent balance. The last couple of years, there have been 7 million one year, 6 million another year budget cuts.
The actions we took last spring, when we accepted the teacher leadership grant and had the application for that, that went well, as well as other actions we took have stabilized that, and we are no longer in a position to see that go down. In fact, I think it should turn the corner and go up.
My thinking is correct in that the unspent balance, we have spending authority on, correct? The fund balance itself, we don't have complete spending authority. We have, that's cash reserve money, but no authority to spend.
That's right. You have to have both.
That's correct.
Alan, did you have a comment?
Well, I just look back, I mean, I like to look at these things as indicators of good health, you know, economic health for our district. And I never can quite say black and white, we're doing better, because when I used to go to the State House in FY11 and 12, I'd get hammered on that we had all this unspent balance of $20 million. So now what we're doing is we're ticking that down to not having all that money. Is that a good thing? So the question, Dave, is, or Dr. Benson is, are we doing a better job of managing our funds so that we're not perceived as having a district with all this cash that we're not utilizing? And it may not be an easy, or maybe no, too. It's not an easy answer. I've asked Steve many times, but I need a better way to explain this to people that we're doing better, and this is a good move that we're headed toward.
Spending authority is an unused savings account to pay for services. Having a large spending authority tells me that you're not providing services that you could be providing. Those balances are to be used when it's raining outside. And over the last four years, we've had a downpour of economic issues, and we have used our spending authority to maintain our educational program, to cushion those financial blows. Cash, you have to have cash behind the spending authority if you wanted to spend it. So I wouldn't ever say that it is more healthy to be closer to where we are now on both of those items. I would rather see them both higher. But it is a trade-off of providing educational services at the time they're needed in bad economic times for the school district and hoping for a better future. Our better future came last spring with the state acknowledging that we had an outstanding teaching faculty, and that the leadership of our teaching faculty should be rewarded by the teacher leadership grant application being approved. That approval has interjected enough authority, budget authority, actually put it behind each student, so that we should have turned that corner and not be utilizing our reserves any further. So it's a good and bad story. Would I like to see them higher? Well, of course, I'd like to see both of those higher. But in managing a school district, my first obligation is to the educational program. We maintained an educational program and did not do draconian, premature cuts. Had the teacher leadership fund not come through, last spring would have been a whole different issue. We would have had our fair share of serious financial issues that some other neighboring school districts had to go through and go through in a rather public way. We were able to manage it. We used our resources to manage it and keep our educational program sound. And that, I believe, was an appropriate use of reserves.
Thank you.
The Iowa Association of School Boards does the financial health deal that's very good and gets into that and states where you're at, to where you should be at. And we've been below. Where we were at the peaks, we were about where we should be. The easiest way, you shouldn't be charged to taxpayer a bunch of money that you're not going to spend. If you're gonna, if you're going to levy it, spend the money, but be sure you have enough money for emergencies such as tax collections, whatever comes by, the flood, et cetera. So that's a very good report, and I'll see if I can get us one.
Great, thank you.
When I go to the meeting this Thursday.
One other addition to that unspent balance, because I feel and we can see that it will be growing, is what determines that unspent balance is also the allowable growth and the enrollment.
Right.
And we've seen both of those increase in the last year. And you know what the last, the previous years were. We went through some of our unspent balance when allowable growth wasn't there and when our enrollment was declining. Now we're turning the corner, and hopefully, we'll continue to.
Excellent point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
That solvency ratio was a major concern.
And that was your unassigned fund balance?
Well, I know, but.
And it's in there now. Yes.
Thank God, that's turned around, is all I'm saying.
Sherri, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This concludes our annual meeting, and so we stand adjourned. And then I'm going to call our regular Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education regular meeting and work session to order. We do have a revised agenda due to an open enrollment request that's no longer needed and a corrected 1314 calendar.
1516.
I'm sorry, 1516 calendar. Thank you, Laurel. So can I have someone please read the approval of the agenda as a motion?
I move the agenda Monday, September 22nd, 2014. Board of Education regular meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
This is a roll call.
Sorry, didn't that need to be the revised agenda? As revised.
As revised.
And second, and this is a roll call action.
Director Rosenthal.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Witt.
Aye.
President Meisterling.
Aye, thank you. Next, I'll turn it over for today for superintendent's report.
Thank you. I want to take this opportunity to express our thanks for the support at the September 9th special election. The turnout of eligible voters confirmed the community's interest in the district's physical plant and equipment levy. The 10-year extension of PEPAL was approved and will be in effect from July 1, 2015, through June 30 of 2025. Also want to thank the parents who helped communicate this information on this vital district issue. The PEPAL helps meet the district's day-to-day and long-term maintenance, transportation, and technology needs. And going forward, the projects funded by PEPAL will be monitored by a patron oversight committee. Next, the Kennedy High School Torch publication has been awarded the 2013-2014 Gallup Award from the Quill and Scroll International Honor Society. The award is given to high school publications that have achieved and sustained excellence. Only 26 American high schools' news programs earn this recognition. This is quite a deal, and congratulations to Kennedy High School Torch publication. The district will host the 18th Annual America Reads: Reading is Contagious event, October 16 through 17. During the two-day event, elementary schools across the metro area become community members, welcome community members to share their stories with students, promote reading as a lifelong skill, center attention on literacy in schools, and demonstrate the joy of reading through collective citizen involvement. Community members can sign up at this year's event through October 1st. Registration link can be found on the district website. I encourage everybody to do that. It's a great, a lot of fun. And now I'll conclude. I'm pleased to introduce another alumni spotlight. We have a rich and diverse group of alumni in Cedar Rapids, and we're proud to recognize
As a student at Worthington High School, Chris Burish honed an interest in science in the classroom and developed a lasting sense of discipline. Through his involvement in extracurricular activities, biology and physics were among the favorite academic courses, and the combined academic and activity experiences taught him to appreciate how both science and arts contribute to making the world a better place.
Probably my favorite class was biology. I remember Mr. Banish was my biology teacher. And that was actually a real formative class for me, because it just really helped me understand the mechanics behind the way life works. And humanities with Dr. Wenzel was pretty fun, and I thought really a nice balance. You know, I think that that's part of the reason I wanted to go to like a liberal arts school for college, is because, you know, it's just not stuff you spend a lot of time thinking about, or I don't spend a lot of time thinking about, but I felt like it was a good kind of balance to the science stuff. And Mr. Banish's class is when I sort of thought, I decided I wanted to be a doctor. I think that's kind of when that happened, you know? And in fact, that's when I started, I think, shadowing some of the doctors in the area to see a little bit more. First couple years I was involved in swimming with Coach Boss, and then got kind of involved in music and the arts under Dr. Kreiser. The Council Choir always had these big, huge, booming pieces that would, you know, really kind of fill a whole room with sound. And then, you know, Madrigals, I always thought was really cool, just like the tunes and the harmonies. Just a good group, you know? It was a bunch of kids that wanted to be there and wanted to work hard at something and, you know, and were very studious. And so I think it turned out to be a good peer group.
Chris also became an active and committed community volunteer while growing up.
Kind of the middle school, high school years, you really spent a lot of time trying to sort through what the world's all about and what your place is going to be in it. And so having those kind of opportunities and experiences sort of at that point in your life is really critical timing, I think.
Chris graduated from Washington in 1993. He stepped into the international health field while living and working in a leprosy colony in India as an undergraduate student. After completing medical school, Chris joined the University of Iowa inaugural Emergency Medicine residency class. Keenly aware of his desire to impact public health needs abroad, he went on to add a public health degree to his education. He currently works and teaches in the University of Iowa Department of Emergency Medicine and travels regularly to Haiti as part of the organization he founded, which focuses on medical and public health needs in isolated rural Haitian communities.
We work in this village called Do Di, which is about 70 houses, and it's, I don't know, it's probably four or five miles outside of the city, kind of in the bush, up in the mountains. We get up there, and the villagers spend the week before coming kind of cleaning out their houses and sweeping up the yards and, you know, they gather all these chairs from the, I think we get all the furniture in the village, actually, and some from neighboring villages. And they put up tarps so that people can be out of the sun. And then they have about, I don't know, almost 2,000 people descend on that village over the course of the week. Basically, the community kind of identifies the problems they want us to tackle. And a lot of times, they identify the solution, and then we just kind of help overcome some of the barriers that they're running into. You know, thankfully, I've learned through, you know, high school and the volunteering and college, that you don't have to just sort of accept the status quo, like you can really do something about it. And I think as you start trying to do something about it, it sort of emboldens you to do more. And it just sort of is this like snowball effect. Have some agency, and you're empowered to do something about things that you see are unjust, I think is so important. And I think that that gets lost so often on people.
Now the father of four children, Chris believes that today's students need education programs that provide an opportunity to apply the classroom skills to the real world.
I think the couple of things that I've really become a big believer in when it comes to education is experiential learning, so getting out and doing something. And learning that is both sort of informational but also engaging, especially with young people today, that are in this sort of fast-moving multimedia, you know, come at you from all sides, electronics age, and they see so much of what's going on in the world in sort of an up-close-and-unfiltered way. Maybe one of the things that we could be doing as educators, and, you know, I say that more as a parent really than as an educator, is to provide some context and framework and help kids kind of take in all of this stuff and help them really, because they're going to take it in whether we're helping them or not, but help them to process it and contextualize it and understand their place in it.
When talking about his own educational experiences in the Cedar Rapids school, Chris shared, "I feel very fortunate to have had such an amazing educational experience in high school." We're very proud to celebrate district alumni, Dr. Chris Burish, and to thank him for his extraordinary efforts.
I'm really lucky, I get to do a lot of different things. And, you know, fortunately, they all sort of orbit around a few central themes so that I don't go crazy. But some days are really, really awesome, some days are really, really sad. But even on the worst day, you hope that you can be kind of the best part of somebody's awful day. We're all in this together. We're all in the same boat. And we all, you know, people that live in Haiti have the same kind of hopes and dreams and aspirations and fears that I have. You know, I think that getting to meet people in other countries, you realize that we're all so much more alike than we are different.
What a terrific interview. Thank you, Keith, for participating in that. We do have just outstanding alum that we continue to celebrate, and thank you, Marcia, for writing that. That was great. Okay, next, our board reports. Eri?
Yes, President Meisterling. I have some chalk talk dates for the 1415 school year. The first one is Saturday, October 18th, at the Edgewood Road Hy-Vee. The next one is February 21st at the First Avenue Hy-Vee. And then Saturday, April 18th, at the Mount Vernon Road Hy-Vee. All of these will be from 9:00 to 10:30 in the morning, and an opportunity for the public to sit down and talk informally with two or three board members.
Thank you. I appreciate you setting that up. I'll always be there. Anyone that wants to join me, just send me a note or an email or give me a phone call. Any other board reports? Okay, seeing none. Next is communications, delegations, and petitions. I do have a request to address the board. It's Lawrence Wenkowsky. Please leave your name and address for the record, please, Lawrence.
Yeah, Lawrence Wenkowsky, 4234 Morel Road, northeast Cedar Rapids. Couple things. First off, I noticed the updated calendar that was in the agenda, and I got a couple, I have a couple of questions in that. One is, how many students are involved in the programs at Kirkwood that benefit from aligning the spring break? And that, I know that was a reason, but I never heard what the number was. And that, so, another thing is, maybe two comments on it is, one is, the September 16th date? Why not move that later, a week or two in the school year, so we don't have three weeks with days off in it, or time off, right in a row? And the same thing with when it comes to like January 29th through February 26th? Move those all down one, so we have more of a, some, a little more break in there between some of the days off? That was one of the, I know, goals of the SEAC, or recommendations of the SEAC Committee was to provide more consistent breaks in it. I mean, I realize that there's things that I'll never agree with you, with people on, so I'm not even going down there. So, but anyway, that was just two suggestions I had. PEPAL, I think it was great that PEPAL, I think it was great that it passed and I think it was great that we had so many people involved in the vote. Unfortunately, I wish more people would have gotten involved in the vote and that, you know, but, you know, it's, it's progress. But I have a concern about that and that is considering how much money was spent in order, on passing PEPAL and against really no one resisting it, you know, other than the people showed up. It's sort of, it's sort of a concern on that. And it seems like the district, you know, there were those people, no matter what they would have voted for, another group of people, no matter what, they wouldn't have accepted it and that. But there was that group in the middle where, you know, it seems like there's, the district's got a lot of baggage it's carrying with. And I think it, it's hurting the district and something needs to be done to address cleaning up some of it. And, you know, I think it was brought up when, it's John or Scott who was here, mentioned, you know, that he was having problems with some of people confusing issue, past issues versus the need of the district. Last thing I want to talk about, and maybe it's just that I'm getting old. But, you know, over the past weekend, you know, go out, we went out, got my daughter a dress, tickets to homecoming dance and talked to another mother about this, and I know this happens at the same, at all the high schools, but she comes, come home, I asked, "How was it?" And she goes, "Very uncomfortable." And that. I go, "Why is that?" Well, she said between the kids who were there, who were drinking, and I know some of it was addressed, but, and I'm sure, I'm not going to come say this is at one high school, because I'm sure it happens at all of them. But, you know, she said there were some kids doing drugs and that. But what really bothered her was all the grinding. And, you know, and, and I think she's right. You know, I would, we need, as a parent, I'd like to know what the schools are doing to making sure that this happens. I know I've talked to principals and athletic directors about drinking and, you know, I personally still don't believe they're doing enough to addressing the issue at events. Even, you know, why are the kids even being made, allowed through the door if they're drunk and that, or whether it's a football game or a dance? But the grinding thing, you know, I know it's a cultural thing. It's, you know, like I said, maybe I'm getting old, but, you know, if a kid's feeling uncomfortable, and I know there was a lot of children who were feeling that way, then isn't that sort of like getting, starting, and maybe it's not bullying, but, you know, isn't that what bullying's about? Making kids feel uncomfortable? You know, I mean, in, in some respects? And I know it's, and maybe that's, it's not, I don't know. But something, I'd like to see a community meeting with all the principals and invite all the parents who want to attend to say, explain to us what, what should we expect from sending our kids to these functions? Because I really don't-
Mr. Wenkowsky, your time is up. Thank you. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Please.
Second.
Discussion? This is a roll call action due to the personnel report. Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Westerkamp?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
President Meisling?
Aye.
Next, I'm going to turn this over to Dave to talk about the Transitions Lab University Prep School, and you have something at your, your table.
You have a document at your table. Mr. Al Albanin is here this evening to address issues that came up in our previous discussion. This item was tabled to this evening and I want to recognize Al for his efforts at being able to join us this evening. Thank you for that. We appreciate it. So I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. I'm Al Fons Albanin. I am the managing partner for Transitions Lab University Prep School. We are a preparatory school for international students preparing to come to college here in the U.S. Universities and Colleges. Ninety percent of our students at this time are headed to Ivy League schools. Where we came to meeting with Dr. Benson and Mary, Mrs. Meisling, is about our goal and our plan of journey to Iowa. So we've, we've had a great partnership with the University of Iowa of getting some students from India. Over the last two years, we now have four students there. We now have a great relationship with ACT. We have six exam centers in ACT and one prep school for ACT in India, two in Mumbai, two in Delhi, and two in Armatabad. So when we look at this, we bring in kids from, from the international level to see Iowa. As you know, when you go places like India, they see New York, they see Chicago, they see LA, you know? So we're the suburb of Chicago is what we say. You know, so what we do is we bring them in during the summer times and we really give them a unique experience. Part of their IB curriculum is called CASE and it's creativity, activity, and service. One of the difficulties they have when they get into their IB in their junior and senior years is that service part. And so we bring them over here to see what, what they can do to help in the community services or community enrichment that we can provide them through the state of Iowa. So we've had kids come over and do job shadows. We have kids come over and do internships. We've had kids come, come over and work with the LBA Foundation Kids as mentors and tutors. So all that is back to that journey to Iowa is where we come in to say, now we have early years programs, because a lot of our kids are juniors and seniors, but they have brothers and sisters now that are third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. And now we have an early years program because they want to be in that program. Part of that program that I, that we have been speaking about and I have proposed is getting into our school systems, the Cedar Rapids Community School Systems, and getting them over here as an exchange or possibly permanent, permanent residency. So some of those things we're working on right now. Actually, we're leaving next week. My partner has apologized for that. He can't be here. Yeah, he is a native of India. But we are going to be leaving next week for the recruiting efforts to get kids over here November 15th. So that's going to be our first pool to really try to get five, 10 kids over here to really see what the experience is like so we can move forward. I know there were some questions about the agreement going from, I think, two years to five years. You know, it, it takes a minute to get people to want to come to Iowa, believe it or not. But, so we're working very diligently on the efforts. And so when we bring them here, we take them to ACT. It's because they're taking the ACT. They're coming from SAT to go to ACT. So we take them down there, we give them, ACT gives them the tour, take them over to the University of Iowa, give them the tour. And then we actually take them here and just show them the schools. We don't take them into the schools, but we show them the schools that they have here. And they're totally amazed by some of the size of the schools, the, the infrastructure of the schools and all those things. So we're really trying to build on this. There's a lot of families that have great interest in coming and bringing their kids early to the U.S. to prepare because they feel like it's a disadvantage if the kids aren't here in America to get selected to some of the top-level schools. So they're really trying to get them here early. So you see a lot of them that go to the Harvard and the Browns and even the Iowa, Iowa Summer School Programs, just so they're getting that, you know, that feeling of, of I've been here. And when you look at that Common App, that Common App asks a lot of those questions of what have you done? And a lot of that comes back to, you know, their, their input that they give in that Common App. So some of the things also that we're doing is we're looking at the summer programs. We're, we're looking at other programs that we have here in the school district. Dr. Pickering has a program called BIG. If we can, if we can figure out how to get some of the kids into BIG, we're trying to figure out how to get some of them into the LBA Foundation and other programs around the city. We're working with, I have a meeting with Mercy University on, on Friday because they're just now starting to, university, starting to look at the international programs that they have. So that whole journey to Iowa is really working for us. I'll take any questions at this time that you may have.
Questions? Ann?
Right. So realizing it does take some time to, to develop a program, I guess I'm still a little uncomfortable with a six-year agreement and wondered if, about maybe considering a two-year agreement with extension. So could you talk about that?
We'll take a two-year agreement. We, we're not uncomfortable with it because we've, we've been recruiting students to come to Iowa for the last two years. So we know there's a pool of candidates that we can go to immediately. So we'll, we'll be okay, I've spoken with our partner, we'll be okay with the reports. If you want to report monthly, semi-month, bimonthly, whatever you want. And then we'll take the two-year agreement, look at it in two years and say how we want to move forward. That's a great protection for us also.
Hey Nancy?
So you're recruiting students from India? From India?
Primarily, but around, we have students in Dubai and Singapore also.
Okay. But bringing here and the intent is to, I'm trying to figure out what it is that, that you're doing. You're bringing them here to familiarize them with schools in the United States so they are better prepared?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. And then how, how does that benefit the Cedar Rapids schools? Is it-
Well, now is the next step.
Okay.
The next step is to increase our enrollment, bring in revenue for the school district and giving them that same, you know, that same experience that they can have instead of just coming for a summer program, being able to be here similar to like an exchange program.
That increases the diversity of our district by having more international students, correct?
Absolutely.
It makes us a global school and the idea is the exposure, the impact to our students is, is going to be a positive. But whatever negative, Dr. Benson, is there any negative you see as a result of this where we're going to add curriculum, additional resources to, to handle something like this?
I do not believe we would be adding resources. I see this as a net win for the students that are brought over because they've become more familiar with American education before they take that leap and get into a university setting so they'll have some experience. It's a win for us because we can integrate these students into areas where we have space. So I don't, I don't view this as an expense to the district. Now obviously, if this explodes and we're talking about 500 kids in, you know, in four or five years, then I think we, we have a different set of circumstances. But it's also a win under the visas that these students will be entering the country on. They are going to be full tuition students and so the parents are going to pay the load for whatever educational program they do receive.
And to piggyback, oops, sorry. And to piggyback on that, we've had a, we, this summer was our first time to do college tours that we integrated the, the LBA students, which are the Cedar Rapids Community School District students and the India students. And if you just took a ride with us to Minneapolis to hear the conversation from both sides of, you know, who they are, who we are, it, it's, it's an amazing conversation that's going on for our kids because I, I struggle a little bit seeing that we don't expose them to enough for, on a global scale.
Gary?
I just wanted to add that my experience working with ELS students and athletes, that they, it's truly a plus for the, for the district, what they add to our awareness of different cultures, being able to expose our students to, to actual, not just reading out of a book or whatever, to be able to experience that firsthand knowledge. And, and friendship greatly enhances our, our students' lives. So wholeheartedly support this and I would like to see it grow to large numbers. I think it would be beneficial, particularly when we start talking about a global economy and a global education.
Ann, did you have a comment?
Well, I just would like to make a, a motion for an amendment.
Okay.
So I would like to move that the term is changed from, so that it goes from August 1st, 2014 to-
Ann, can I interrupt you? We don't have a motion on the table yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was presented as a motion.
No, it's presented as information. I'm going to ask for a motion as soon as we're done-
Sorry. I just saw action item on there, so I thought it was ready to vote. So, okay. Pause.
Okay. I did have a question. What's the caliber, the academic caliber of the students that we would be bringing in?
Um, there, most of those-
Is it a range or?
Most of those students right now are geared at Ivy League schools, Harvard and Yale, those types of schools. But we are going into the second tier now, more Cambridge schools that have those second-tier students also because of the high request for it.
And how will housing needs be taken care of?
Uh, we're working on that, but we have a, we have several agreements with one, with actually a hotel that would, would like to house them and work on an agreement with them. We also have some housing, some realtors that we're working with, and we also have some parents that we're finding that are very interested in, in having them stay with them also.
And the social responsibility of, of taking care of these kids when they're not in the, in the school buildings?
That will be our responsibility.
Okay.
And then one thing I would do want to add is I've introduced this to, you know, I've introduced this, spoke to many teachers about this. So we're looking at some, maybe some type of teacher exchange program over the summer also. And also bringing Dr. Benson over to India and letting him hang out with us.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the MOU.
Um, I would like to move that we approve the MOU with the modification that it's a two-year term with at least an annual review and discussion. And that's the end of the motion, but to work that out, it may be that each year we extend it again. So we're always looking ahead two years. But it, but I don't, I just think at this point, having a two-year agreement would be a good place to start.
Okay, so, second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Keith?
I'm, I'm in favor of, of this and I would go the five-year agreement myself, but I can't vote against it now. So that kind of puts me in a corner that I'm going to have to vote for the two-year even though I, I wouldn't. Because, because I think that relationships like this, they'll, they'll realize that there's really quality schools in the Midwest as well. And, and, you know, I would hope that that gets pushed. This, this can be a win-win-win all the way around. These hopefully will be leaders in their country and they'll know something about Iowa and, you know, long-term working relationships as well.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the MOU as motioned by Ann, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay. Al, thank you very much for taking the time to be with us.
Thank you.
I know it was a hardship from a transportational point of view, so we really appreciate it. I think he drove all night and data to be here, so. I'll turn this over to Laurel and Dave Benson for policy manual review and revisions.
Thank you. We have a number of policies, regulations, and a procedure that are coming for your review and consideration this evening. If you have questions, we would be happy to address them.
Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, they will come back to us for approval. Next, I'll turn this over to Dave Benson for the 15-16 school year calendar.
Okay. Generally, we're going to, we're going to receive reports. You have at your place two calendars, one the modified calendar for Taylor and one a calendar. This is the 15-16 calendar and for us to meet the requirements of the state to put a modified calendar forward, we need to approve this by-
November 1st.
November 1st. So we're bringing it here for workshop kind of discussion and then we'll bring it back for approval at a subsequent meeting. That said, the Parent Advisory Committee had a large discussion last spring around this and Dr. Pickering is going to report on how these calendars that are before you meet key elements of that work or don't meet the elements of that work. And then there is a longstanding issue around professional development and how best to accomplish professional development. And Deputy Superintendent Mary Almas will speak around the concepts of professional development. And then between the three of us, we'll cert, try to answer any questions that the board has. But this is strictly discussion tonight, not voting, and it's a, a great opportunity for our public who views these meetings to see the deliberative body at work. So with that, Dr. Pickering?
Thank you, Dr. Benson. You have in front of you the sheet with the criteria, the non-negotiables that the district put forward in terms of, so we make sure we're aligned with the teacher contract and such. And the second half of the document, the criteria that the SEAC committee put together last spring in the order that they, of importance that they felt. And so I won't read all of these, these things to you, but I feel pretty, pretty good about what we were able to accomplish with this calendar in that it meets, completely or partially meets virtually every criteria the, the committee put forth. It gives our kids more full weeks of school, more time in school with, that's uninterrupted with the lots of half-days and so forth. It represents a 76 and a half percent- It represents a 76.5% reduction in the half-day, uh, early dismissals, which I know our community and our SEAC committee really wants to see us, uh, limit and reduce over time, so we're going from 17 to four in this calendar. And Mary Ellen will talk a bit more about why we feel it's important we keep those four even though we understand our community wants to see us continue to work, uh, work towards, uh, more full days, but we have some work to do to understand the 1,080-hour requirement and how that's going to play out over time, and so we, we want to move, uh, move forward but cautiously and not, uh, not get way out in front and then find out the state turns around and says we can't do that anymore, those kind of things. Uh, so the regular professional development, as you see in the criteria, is also a critically important element to the SEAC committee, and, uh, with this schedule, we just, we couldn't provide that consistency without, uh, having a couple of, of half-days to, to put in between the six that we have, uh, in full days. The snow day part, as you see, we've, uh, feel good about that, that we have some snow days built in in January, February, and March, so we should, we should be able to respond pretty quickly on inclement weather and be able to make those up. I know the concern was if we keep pushing them all to the end of the school year, then kids are missing days of school, uh, as they prepare for AP tests and, and the state assessment and that. And so, you know, another thing, uh, getting the school year concluded earlier, uh, the best-case scenario in this calendar is May 26th, worst case is June 3rd, which is how many days better than this year? 10? Something like that. And then the number seven, it was difficult to quantify the district resources, but this is a 176-day student calendar. We're able to do that and meet and exceed the 1080-hour requirement because we're, we got rid of all those half-days, and so that's going to save us some time in terms of days of, uh, running our buses and having all the support staff working in there. And so in, in all, we didn't meet all the criteria perfectly, but I feel for a first iteration, the calendar committee did a outstanding job of, of following what the SEAC wanted and trying to meet, uh, as many as possible.
I'm, I'm going to speak a little bit about the professional learning component of, um, how, how that, how the calendar will impact professional learning for our teachers in our school district. And I would preface that with the Office of Learning and Leadership, um, specifically the Professional Learning Department is, is very committed to making sure that we have a, a rigorous and a very high-quality professional, uh, learning, uh, schedule despite what the calendar is. I would, I would have to go back, though, and speak to some of the research, and I'm not telling you anything that you haven't heard already, um, regarding the value of more frequent and more targeted feedback, um, and professional learning. It's the same thing with our students. More, more, uh, timely feedback, more professional, uh, more targeted feedback is going to, uh, impact the quality of instruction, just as if we have more op- more frequent opportunities for professional learning for our teachers, that would also impact the quality of the , uh, learning. We think about, and you've seen this cycle a million times, uh, we've shared the cycle that we use for our professional learning and for our PLC work with professional learning communities. If you think of that, that's a process for continuous improvement, and that's the guiding philosophy of our district, is that continuous improvement. And throughout that cycle, there are many opportunities for teachers to get together and to talk about, whether it be, uh, speaking about a formative assessment that they've used, um, looking at student data, whether it be, um, talking about instruction and, uh, different strategies that they've used in their classroom, or planning for future instruction. The more often those teachers can have that time for those conversations, the higher quality of the instruction is going to be in the classroom, which ties right back to our, our broad district goal of, uh, quality instruction for our students. If you were to go to strictly a full day of professional learning on the calendar, of course, you would have less times to have that, teachers, um, get together and meet and for that professional learning. The other thing I wanted to point out is that our professional learning days are divided between building and district, so you could go weeks and weeks without having building professional learning if we were just to use a straight, um, full-day schedule because there would be less opportunities for the, for the, uh, professional learning. And so, uh, you look at the amount of professional learning, um, will, the di- the amount of, of time will stay pretty, uh, close to what we've done this year, but the opportunities would be much less if we were to not have those half-days in there. The last thing that I would speak to is just the PLC data that we got back, and you saw the PLC survey at our last, uh, board meeting that was shared, and, um, participants, uh, the teachers had an opportunity to share with us, um, open-ended responses, four different places in the survey. I'm just going to read a few of those. Participants wrote that they believe that meetings could be more productive if they took place more often. Participants wrote that they didn't meet often enough to allow for continuous learning. Participants wrote that not meeting often enough limits what they can accomplish. So that's from the words of our teachers on the PLC, um, survey that was administered. So the other thing, um, I couldn't help but say, time is, we're, we're at a very pivotal point in our district with the teacher leadership that we have, um, for this year with the implementation of the teacher leadership system in our district. We have, um, a great deal of professional learning going on for those teachers' leaders and for them to take that back to their buildings as well. So we feel that the quality of our professional learning is going to increase, um, as well as, um, because of the teacher leaders that we have, they are unbelievable. They, they, they took off day one and they're, they're still running. And so, um, giving more opportunities for them to support professional learning at the school building, I think, is also an important item to bring up. So, again, we're going to, we're going to provide high-quality, uh, professional learning for our teachers despite the schedule, but, again, I think there is a, uh, a, uh, need to support the more frequent with the half-days and the full-days.
Okay, open it up for discussion. Comments, questions? Ann?
Is that, um, so the change between what we received in the agenda and what we received tonight, is that primarily the, the half-days is what changed, or is there something else that I...
Well, that's, uh...
It was the four days.
It's the, uh, two full days going to four half-days.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And it increased the number of student contact days to 178 because you've taken out two full and went to halves, so you picked up two additional contact days.
You mean hours.
Well, these are actual contact days, even though we're on hours.
Oh, oh, got it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Alan?
Hi, she called on you.
I'm sorry. Well, I wanted to hear what you had to say.
Thank you.
Then I can combat it. The, the thing I was wondering about is, uh, is there, first of all, I heard Dr. Benson say there's two half-days equal one full day, is that right? So if we went back to what we had before, we'd have to take all these full-day Fridays and create two half-days, is that right? If we wanted to undo this and, and go to half-days?
Right, you'd go back to the 16 or 17...
Right.
...half-days.
I'm going to jump ahead here because I tend to do that. I like the idea of having more contact with the teachers. I also think that, you know, having, let's say, one in September for that fourth, uh, the 4th of September for that one full day, and that's all you did for the whole month, that would be ridiculous for the teachers. On the other hand, because we're trying to be user-friendly and teacher frien- or student-friendly, I think a compromise would be to go to the 18th of September as a full day. It accomplishes two things. One, it still has that two contacts for the month, but it also, what I was hearing from the teachers was the two hours you get out of the half-day is not, is worthwhile as a full day would be. And so I would propose both September 18th be a full day and February 12th be a full day, once we get around to, to talking about this, and the reason is that you're just collapsing those two half-days into a full day in the fall and the two in the spring, and voila, you've accomplished both. You've got, uh, the contacts, yes, you have less contact, but at the same time, you don't have the, the chaos that ensues on a Wednesday half-day is how I put it. Um, I don't think it works very well as a user-friendly school district that we're trying to be.
Gary?
My turn?
That's why I wanted to go first.
Um, I have two. First, a question and then a, I think, a, a statement. The question is on the, um, on the snow days, um, that we have. Those right now are, are put in for, uh, staff learning days, so students wouldn't normally be there. What happens if we use one of those as a snow day? How does that, uh, how does that affect the contract with the employees? Are, you know, we're now moving with student hours as days, but the, our contract is, has been in the past, has been days. Teachers are employed for days. So do they have to, if that becomes a, if that becomes a, uh, a student contact day, to fulfill their, the teachers' contracts, will then, will that be added at the end of the year?
If they worked teaching, it would just be that they were, had students on those snow days rather than having professional learning, so the teacher contract wouldn't, contract days wouldn't be affected.
It would not affect the teacher contract. Right.
They would make it up, though, as a, as a student contact day.
Right, right.
You would lose the professional learning day.
Okay.
But on the June 1 through 3, at the bottom, it says potential staff learning makeup, so that the learning doesn't get added at the end?
No, the, the purpose of this is to make up snow days in close proximity to when the snow day may be lost and not necessarily use the days at the end. Matter of fact, counting hours, uh, I don't, uh, I would not anticipate this year unless we have an exceptional year that we would extend the school year past the scheduled dismissal date.
From a staff learning point and, and educational side, I think that's a, a great idea to put it closer to, uh, the, the makeup day closer to when it's lost. Adding at the end of the year, uh, a day lost in February doesn't, doesn't help much. So this is, that's a great, great thing. The other, the comment about the half-days, um, didn't we actually, though, in our, in our application to the state for our teacher grants, did we not have, that we would have half-days, there would be more professional development days? Didn't we have the, the half-days actually in there or the yearly release days?
I don't believe we had a, I don't believe we referred to whether it would be a half-day or full day.
Well, well, maybe not half-day, full-day, but the frequency of them.
Yeah, I think we did refer to ongoing and frequent and, uh...
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, I think there is a mechanism, uh, envisioned in the first-year process that we'll go back and modify our application based upon how this works out. That's, uh, I think the intent of putting the half-days back in is to, uh, not be a burden on our community, but to, uh, recognize what we know about professional staff development and that those ongoing and frequent opportunities are important.
I, I just want to answer, I think, Gary, what you were going at. If we have a, if we have a, um, full-day professional learning day that teachers miss, then that does put them down to 190 days, and they would make that up at the end of the school year. There was one year where we tried to not make it up, and then the next year, the district told us we could never do that again, so we would make it up at the end, but the students would still finish on the, the, on, on time day.
Just on time.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. Thank you for clarification.
And I'll just throw this out, is one of the concerns, particularly with our high school AP teachers, is if they lose five or six days of instruction and don't make it up till the end of the year, that's five or six days of instruction that they've missed prior to those, uh, very important examinations, which, uh, for the students mean potentially a, a college credit. Uh, so making those days up more congruent with, uh, when they were lost and in advance of the AP testing is a real plus.
Other comments, Ann?
Um, I, I was just wondering why there's no professional development in April? Or, I'm thinking as, like, midterm reporting happens around there, and sometimes there's a day for reporting to make up the time that they spent after hours, so...
If that's on March 14th.
Oh, that's March 14th, okay. All right, but neither, not the one published in the board book or this one is their time in April, so I was just curious. Usually it's...
If you look at the philosophy of this calendar, uh, it is to try to go to school, uh, the most in the fall, un- most uninterrupted time, August, September, October, November, and then after spring break, uh, to have those continuous, uh, blocks of instruction. We know the choppiest part, uh, Laurel Day has, uh, a spreadsheet on every dismissal for the last decade.
More and more.
And we've studied that very closely, and about every other year, we'll have some kind of, uh, inclement weather event before the winter break, but almost never do you have an inclement weather event after spring break. So it's, the philosophy was built to try to group those dates for making up s- inclement weather around when they're most likely, under the known decade of experience we've had, when they're most likely to occur and have more solid instructional components early and late in the school year.
Alan?
I just think it's nice that we have this ahead of all the talk, and it's not October now, and we're trying to ratify this now, because I really believe that there is a little more massaging to do, and, uh, so we could talk about that later. Yeah, I'm hearing arguments both ways, so I, I understand where we're trying to get to. It just seems like we're on the four-yard line, and we just have to forge ahead another four, you know, convert these four days, half-days into two full days, and we're, and we're over the goal line, but, uh, we can talk about that more.
I happen to not mind the, the four half-days.
I, I do subscribe to the philosophy of the frequency of professional development. I do understand the concern that SEAC has, um, regarding user-friendly, and I also understand that some teachers, even though, um, I, the two and a half hours isn't as productive for them as it is for other teachers. But as we transition, I think it's important to keep some consistency in here, and then each year, as we get better at this, maybe then we, we can recapture those, those four half-days, but that's my, my thought. Keith?
On the line screen, right? With, it's not, doesn't mention Kirkwood. It, it doesn't align with Kirkwood.
It does.
It does align with Kirk...
It aligns with Kirkwood and the...
And Iowa and Iowa State.
Three regent universities.
Schools all have the same?
They do, they do in 15-16. They don't have to, which was pointed out in a previous discussion, but they do this year.
All right, all right, get it over there. And the other significant thing, obviously, is the semester system.
The semester system.
Which people need to be aware of, and I think most are.
And remember, this is 15-16, so we still have lots of time to educate and, and communicate the, those changes. Ann, I think you were going to say something.
Yeah, I actually had three more questions.
Yeah.
So, um, the spring break, Laurel, could you talk about the, or somebody, I know we've had the conversation, but the pros and cons of having it align with universities and, and other school districts, and then there's some disadvantages too, so. Anybody who wants to take that one.
I'll comment on one major disadvantage that I had not thought about, and I talked to the director of the Eastern Iowa Airport, and he said, "When you have that many students out on that period of time universally throughout the state, it becomes an air, an airport issue."
But Tim Baldwin, if that's what he talked to, he told me they just bring in more airplanes because of the same reason they do for the bowl games, so it's not as big a deal, and frankly, he told me if we could get more users of, uh, of the flights, although he's moving back to Virginia, uh, get more users of the airport, he would, he would welcome that, so I don't think that's a real negative.
Okay.
One of the major disadvantages that I'm aware of is, been brought to my attention by law enforcement, um, it's not good to have all of your students off at the same time in the metro area. Uh, it does tend to lead to more disciplinary problems and a larger number of students, um, and I know that that's just a concern that they've expressed to me. It's, it's not something that we've ever done before. We've aligned, uh, with everybody in the, in the metro area, but I do know that there are concerns out there... out there, that to have everybody gone at the same time is not necessarily a good thing.
And I'll modify or add to that. It's also a workforce development issue. If you think about our major employers in town and their reliance, basically, on having people, we've had a staggered spring break, so they haven't lost their workforce entirely at the same time. And if, as I do, talk to some leaders from time to time, those spring break weeks are productivity downturns for our major employers. So by going and coordinating with everything, it makes life easier for certain segments of our community, but it may have a counterintuitive unintended consequence in work productivity for our large employers.
I think there was a gentleman here, two board meetings ago, from the U.S. Post Office, that made that same comment.
Yeah.
The goal would be that this item would come back under a public hearing at our next board meeting, which is actually three weeks from this evening. It would be October 13th. It would be the public hearing, and the board would be asked to approve the calendar at that time. So if you do have discussion items for us now to bring forward, if you're looking at massaging the calendar, we would probably want to hear those discussions tonight, so that the public is well aware of what we're planning to bring.
One more item about the spring break would be with Kirkwood. If not aligning with Kirkwood, that means we would have students on spring break who would actually have to attend class. So, for example, Kirkwood would be off a different week than we would be. So then, our students would attend our class during Kirkwood's spring break, and then the following week, they would be expected to attend Kirkwood's courses while we were off. So they, in essence, may not get a spring break, even if we make a full one.
How many students are we talking about, Carla?
A couple hundred.
Okay. Do we align start dates, though? Because I know in the past, we haven't started the same time.
We, our start dates are, were a day different this year.
Okay.
So, a little bit better this year than it was last year. So we started the 26th, they started the 25th.
Okay. Next question had to do with consistent start-stop times. So I know that, especially in the high schools, we have different start, when the day begins and when the date ends. Would this calendar change that? Well, it has to do both with the number of periods per day and the time that school happens. So I just wonder, well, this calendar doesn't tell me what times, how many hours a day, and I don't know if we're lengthening our days.
Well, what we've done is we've collected the schedule from each school, so that we could assure that we had the 1,080 hours. And we have the 1,080 hours at all of our schools.
But that doesn't mean that there's consistent start-stop times.
That does not mean that they're consistent start and stop times. Elementary is consistent, middle school is consistent, high school is not.
Okay, and how about the number of periods per day?
That's, there's-
Is that going to end up being standard?
Each of our schools has a early bird, or a period zero, or they call them different things, available for students before school, and then a six-period day.
Okay, because a few years ago, one of the schools had a seven-period day in addition to zero hour. So I just was, yeah, Jefferson had a seven-period day.
They do have a bit of a different schedule, because they use, several years ago, their schedule was changed, because they have professional learning community time each week on Wednesdays.
Okay.
Currently.
Is, so is it a busing issue when our schools, when the high schools are different? Is that-
We work with, each of the, each of the principals works with the transportation department to make sure that we can run the high school or secondary routes, and then the elementary routes as well.
Okay, and so do our start times coordinate with Kirkwood? I just know from personal experience that when a high school starts at 8:15, and Kirkwood starts at 8 o'clock, it kind of messes up the day. So I was just kind of wondering, if we're going to align spring break, are we going to try and align time?
Well, in every class at Kirkwood, we, as we worked to set up busing for the kids this year, classes start at different times. So not all of their classes start, for example, at 8 o'clock. Some will start at 8:15, some will start at 8:30, some will start at 9:30. So that was a bit of a challenge as we worked through that. So that, there is, that is an issue, and that we're, we did run buses, our transportation for those students, if their course did start prior to our start time. We still did that.
Okay, thank you.
Alan?
There is an advantage, right, to having all the high schools start at different times, different periods? I mean, there's got to be a positive for it. It can't just be a personal preference by the principal. It's got, there's got to be a thing where it helps the fact that our district has got the ability to have three or four high schools, that we can have a little bit of chaos amongst our school buildings. I mean, there's got to be a plus for that, right?
You've answered your own question.
There's a huge, huge plus. I was waiting for you to say yes. Because honestly, it makes absolutely no sense, three years, or, yeah, three years on this board, of why we haven't got there yet. But I kind of said, well, maybe we should embrace it, because I think Trace Pickering once said, it's nice, we have the ability to have three high schools, we can offer three times the stuff, and we can have this school be more focused on this, and this school be more focused on that. And so, yes, I say, okay, well, then the schedule's good, too, that, you know, one school has nine periods, another one has five periods. I mean, I don't understand it, but it's just one of those things where I believe it's a personal preference thing. The leadership in the building.
Yes, and there are, the schedules are dependent also upon, we talked about the fact that each of our schools would have an intervention slash enrichment time for students, and that is, that looks a little different at each of the high schools as well.
The population we serve is different.
Yeah.
That's the key, you have to keep repeating to people. That's why it is what it is. Dave clears his voice, but that's the reason.
Any other, Anne?
Some of the half-days. So just to echo Mary's sentiments, I think, as far as feedback goes, for what comes back. And then, I guess if, the process for the community, as far as submitting comments or concerns, I know there'll be the public hearing, but sometimes by the time you have a public hearing, things are kind of firmed up, so I just don't know what's the opportunity for people to have input.
I'm sure we can have Marcia put, I think she's even planning to put it out on the homepage tomorrow for stakeholder feedback, if we can, you know, grab some feedback that way. We've also shared it with our non-public school districts, so that they're providing us with feedback. And again, this board meeting would then reflect that we've had the discussion, and obviously, people have the opportunity to provide feedback in any way they see fit.
And I would assume that you're going to push this out through your principals at your elementary, middle, and high, so parents are well aware of the conversation and the changes. Okay.
Mary, can I add one more thing? With the addition of those early dismissal days, another thing that we talked about at Cabinet was, when you have the student days now at 178, which they used to be 180, that gives us, that is, puts us really close to that 1080, a little bit over. So if you think about our days, there's quite a few days where we don't cancel school completely, but we do have late starts. And now, when we have those late starts, those hours will need to be made up. So we could have a week of late starts, fog, cold, whatever it is, and then all of a sudden, we have a day to make up already. And so, it's kind of a domino effect of now you've missed the PD, and now you have, you know, all those pieces. So I think putting a few early dismissals in there with those extra hours, those extra six hours that students would get, or five, or four, whatever it is, gives us a little bit of leeway, because then we do have some hours kind of banked for some of those early dismissals. And not, not that Dr. Benson would ever look at the safety of our children and the hours that we need to do, but, you know, when you're making those tough decisions, that does come down to always deciding what we have to make up and how that has to be done, so.
Good point, thank you.
Mary?
Yes.
It sounds like three out of the seven folks like the way it's laid out here. So I would propose, one, if the board would entertain this, the 29th of January is a snow makeup day, and the 26th of February is a snow makeup day, correct?
Yes.
So I would propose that the 13th of January be the snow makeup day, and the 10th be, of February, be the snow makeup day, so that we can, again, if we need it, we can use it on those days. It just seems, based on what Tanya just said, it makes more sense that we would do that based on the hours. So I don't know if the board would entertain that idea of making those blue boxes on the 13th and the 10th of February, or if that is totally, makes no sense.
So you would make those full days of professional development, so that they could be used as full-day makeup days? Because right now, they're half and half.
I'd make them half-days, snow makeup days, because, again, it's the idea, I predict we'll need those, and those days would go away, and then we would just have, instead of losing a full day for a snow day, snow makeup day, if you will, or have the 20, you know, we lose a PLC on the 29th of January, we'd actually only lose, we'd lose less on the 13th, which helps the teachers, which I predict would be better for the students in the end, because the half-day, in my estimation, is more chaotic on the students and the parents than it is to do a full day.
So I think you're just saying, add more options on snow makeup. You'd keep the three gold ones with the blue, and you'd add the little blue bar on those two green days also, just to have more flexibility.
All right. Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
I need the translator.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Anne.
It's just all about increasing flexibility.
Yes, yes.
Parents are going to love us.
Other comments? And if you have other comments, please just submit them to Laurel, so that they can get to the ad staff, and they can take that into consideration when they bring it back the next time. Does that make sense? Okay, good discussion. I know this is an easy work. It's a whole calendar that you're trying to figure out who's off when, and get all this stuff in, and keep your, you know, keep the goal of professional development going at a very high expectation rate, and we understand that. At the same time, we have to juggle the needs of our parents and our community, so, I, on behalf of the board, appreciate very much all the work that you've done on the calendar. I know it's been very difficult. I also want to thank the entire community on behalf of the board for our pebble, successful levy vote. That was a tough evening for us on that Tuesday, as those votes came in, and we were at the auditor's office, but we couldn't be happier. We're going to be very responsible, very communicative about these projects as they complete at each school. And, community, thank you very, thank you very, very much. No further business before this board. Please fill out your meeting evaluation, and we stand adjourned.